Rise. We've been keeping our thoughts and prayers that our troops and law enforcement and all emergency responders always return home safe. Thank you, my pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The point of the old county meeting was to be published in the news media, so it's supposed to be in county process and back there, so it's on the board of the Middlesex County Administration film making, and it's 28 hours of the main, it's a three year duration.
Ball call?
County Commissioner McCallum.
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner McCallum. County Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
County Commissioner Nara. Here. County Commissioner Carr. County Commissioner Dr. Rude.
Here, your recognitions.
Yes, recognizing the award winners of the We Can See Inc. Deep Plastic Pollution Video, recognizing Cole Blachek as the Dean of Evil's Carpe Statives, recognizing the honorary Jamaican Blood Raising, recognizing the honorees of the Lebanese Blood Raising, recognizing Kim Sayed as Volunteer of the Year at the Middlesex County Fair and Deputy Captain Jane James with his Gospel Church on their 120th anniversary.
So motion to adopt the above recognition, we're still not.
Second.
Ball call?
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner McCallum.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rude.
Yes, okay, I have resolutions for the award winners of We Can See, the Deep Plastic Pollution Video Contest. So, if all the people that are involved in the We Can See, come on up. Anybody, anybody else? You can stay right here, yep. Okay, correct me if I misspell this, please speak up, the name is I hear, we have Sanjana Kowath. That's you, okay. She is a recent graduate of North Brunswick High School, and she's demonstrated exceptional dedication to environmental sustainability and has made significant contributions as the founder of We Can See Inc. She has been honored with the Governor's Environmental Excellence Award in the Student-Led Environmental Education category, reflecting her commitment to environmental stewardship and her impactful role in promoting sustainable development. As an environmental ambassador for 24 USA, Sanjana has actively empowered others to engage with environmental issues and has used her platform to advocate for positive change and inspire action across diverse communities. She plans to continue her efforts to foster a more sustainable living community throughout her educational journey, embodying her passion for environmental conservation and her commitment to creating a healthier planet for future generations. We Can See is established, was established in 2018, is a nonprofit organization dedicated to environmental conservation, sustainability, and raising awareness about the importance of responsible practices to protect our planet. Board of County Commissioners recognizes the vital role of leaders like Sanjana in advancing environmental initiatives, fostering community engagement, and influencing decision-making processes to promote sustainable practices. Congratulations, you have a very bright future ahead of you, I'll tell you that. We have our, there's, Justin, okay. And then we have the other students here, right? Please state your name, who's here? Okay, and? Okay, we have resolutions here recognizing you as well for your efforts in creating a sustainable environment for all our residents and trying to promote more practices. So I congratulate you all, we congratulate you all on this, and we'll do a group photo, okay? We can have that, and let's see. It's there? It's good, Amy? Okay, and who are? Oh, yeah, perfect, okay. Secures. Okay. And we will get the other ones to the other folks. You can take them, okay, why don't you move out here? Okay? It's yours. And you want to say anything? Do you want to say something?
I can, yeah.
Okay, come on up.
Thank you for joining us today to recognize the achievements of three outstanding students who are also change makers and two wonderful teachers who are also mentors. Mr. Brian Beliva and Ms. Anya Butt, who are not here today, are exemplary teachers because not only are they focused on their students' awareness, but also their growth. We are so glad to recognize you today because teachers like you allow students to grow past the textbooks. Teachers like you are valuable and special because they foster a better tomorrow and make you. Ms. Rada Singh, your submission proved to be the most impactful as it was capable of not only catching anyone's attention, but also keeping it throughout. She has the esteemed ability to get people to listen to you and really pay attention to what you have to say. Mr. Abdelfamid, it's not easy to discuss a serious topic in engaging, original way, and your submission matched that method to the T. That type of innovation is what inspires people to do more and inspires change, which is vital to a progressing world. And Ms. Rukamil, or Jemal, I'm sorry, you brought the facts to the table, but not just the ones you've already heard, you proved to be the most informative, the amount of research that you have clearly done, and you anticipated your audience and knew how to bring the right information to them. Each of you have a very unique set of skills that shine through your video entries, and it is our honor, We Can See, to be able to recognize you and your contrasting yet complementary specialties. Congratulations and thank you for being a part of this mission to promote environmental awareness and sustainability, and we can't wait to see the amazing things we'll surely accomplish in the future. And thank you to the Commissioner Director and the Board of County Commissioners for having us here today to celebrate the success of our winners and their advisors, thank you. And as for me, I just graduated high school at North Brunswick Township High School, and I'm off to continue my studies at Rutgers Orange College.
If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to stay, we understand. Okay, correspondence?
Commissioner, if you'd like to report your comments, we've had a first-class speaker last meeting, his correspondent, Captain Brown, you're welcome, it's a third group of work for our president.
So motion to accept the correspondence. All in favor? Vote, motion carries, minutes for approval.
It's a regular meeting held on July 2nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM and scheduled by 2:00, 2:00 towards 3:00.
So motion to approve the minutes. Ball call?
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rude?
Yes, ordinances.
Notice of this public hearing is published in Home News Tribune on July 19, 2024. This public hearing was authorized by the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on July 18, 2024.
Clerk will read ordinance number 24-dash-zero-zero-one.
County of Middlesex gave New Jersey guarantees of working security payment of principal and interest on the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, can guarantee lease revenue, refunding bonds, Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission Project Series 2024, and higher principal amount, not to exceed $22 million, and authorizing a public hearing, City House, August 15, 2024, at 6:30 PM, authorizing publication of notice thereof consenting to such financing and determining certain other matters in connection thereof.
So motion to open the public hearing? All in favor? Public hearing is open, anyone have any comments on this ordinance, number dash twenty-four-zero-zero-one? Please state your name and address, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Charlie Crowe to Bill, the head of Urban Brunswick Today, community news outlet serving the area, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. I'd like to ask what the $22 million is used for?
So Charlie, this was actually issued from 2008, it was to build two special education facilities in St. Louis and Stanley.
Got it, and I did want to ask the Commissioners if you have any comment on the recent controllers' report about the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, are you familiar with that?
Well, I had discussed the ordinance, Charlie.
Okay, I mean, it's about their finances, and this is for them, right?
About the ordinance, about the $22 million.
Okay, I'll ask again later, but, so this is two schools that are already built and open, and what prompted the ordinance tonight?
It's essentially to refinance the bonds.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries, so motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two.
Second.
Ball call?
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rude?
Yes.
Notice of this public hearing is published in the Home News Tribune on July 19, 2024. The public hearing was authorized by the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on July 18, 2024.
Clerk will read ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two.
County of Middlesex gave New Jersey guarantees of working security Middlesex County Improvement Authority, can guarantee capital equipment and improvement funding bond, Series 2024, and higher principal amount, not to exceed $22 million, and authorizing a public hearing, to be held August 15, 2024, at 6:30 PM, authorizing publication of notice thereof consenting to such financing and determining certain other matters in connection thereof.
So motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion. Our public hearing is open to the public, please state your name and address and comments on twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two, you have five minutes.
Thanks, Charlie Crowe, once again, and I'm asking, in this case, just for you to confirm that this is the routine MCIA financing for a handful of municipal governments and the county that purchased some capital improvements?
Correct, it's equipment based, it's more than long-term capital.
Got it, so like vehicles?
Vehicles, fixtures, stuff of short and useful, like equipment.
Cool, can you give me the list of towns, say four or five towns?
Sure, yeah, so the county is a participant along with Almeta, Highland Park, South Brunswick, Carteret, and tonight.
Okay, I think that's all I have on that one, thank you.
Motion for the first vote, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, motion carries, so motion to adopt ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two.
Second.
Ball call?
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rude?
Yes, reports of Commissioners, County Commissioner Charlie Kenny?
Thank you, Director, I just want to give a quick update on our newly renamed transportation system, but to provide an update to the residents regarding the rebranding of Middlesex County Area Transportation, MCAT, to Middlesex County Ride. This change not only modernizes our transit system's image, but also reinforces our commitment to providing accessible, affordable, and reliable transportation for all Middlesex County residents. Why we changed the name and decision to rebrand, rebrand MCAT to Middlesex County Ride was rooted in the goals of the county, that forward-thinking approach to our public mobility solutions. The new name better aligns with our vision of integrating advanced technology and innovative practices into our transit services by welding with the modern demands, beginning to enhance the overall transportation experience for our residents, and ensure that our services remain adaptable and scalable for future growth. How people can use the new Middlesex County Ride, there's three ways to use it. One is we have fixed routes that require no advanced booking, these shuttles connect with existing bus and rail services and offer a convenient transportation option. There's also the ride reservation, this is for county seniors, citizens, and disabled residents who need transportation assistance. Rides are shared and require advanced reservations. For more information, residents can call 1-800-221-3520, that's 1-800-221-3520, to make a reservation. And then we have our new Ride On Demand, and that's currently a pilot program here in the city of Brunswick, and this is a ride-sharing service allowing users to book rides through the Ride On Demand app or via phone. It operates seven days a week and will offer affordable transportation options with rides priced at $3 per passenger. What we, what we provide, Middlesex County Ride prioritizes safe, sustainability, and service excellence. There's six codes of rebanding, rebranding, excellence guides us in exceeding rider expectation, ensuring safety and security, maximizing scalability while fostering community connections. We are dedicated to continuously improving our transportation infrastructure to better serve our residents and support the economic growth of the region. This rebranding is just the beginning of our ongoing efforts to enhance our public mobility. I look forward to sharing more details and future dates and meetings on how we, how we can further improve our services here in Middlesex County. And that's all I have, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Alyssa McCollum?
Thank you, Director. Tonight I'm pleased to present two important guarantee ordinances that Middlesex County has adopted, which will significantly benefit our community. First, let me address ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-one. This ordinance involves refinancing bonds originally issued by Middlesex County Improvement Authority in 2008. These bonds were essential in financing the construction of two special education facilities within our county. With this refinancing, we secured a more favorable interest rate leading to savings at just under $700,000 over the remaining years of our debt service. To prove is a clear example of our commitment to fiscal responsibility and ensuring that our financial obligations are managed to benefit our taxpayers. Next, I'd like to discuss ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two tied to our annual lease purchase equipment program. This program is financed through fixed rate bonds issued by the MCIA on behalf of Middlesex County and several participating municipalities. The county's AAA bond rating is issued by Standard and Poor's and Booty's Investor Service guarantees these bonds, enabling us to secure lower borrowing costs. This results in substantial savings not only for the county, but also for the municipalities involved. For this program, municipalities can finance vital equipment such as police cars, ambulance, and heavy equipment for public works, and computers, and reduce costs. This ensures that we continue improving our new systems of quality of life. Additionally, the program offers significant advantages, including no down payment requirements, and allows for quick financing smaller capital leads that might not be practical to address individually. This concludes our important.
Thank you. Commissioner Halska.
Thank you, Director, for being here, everyone. From the Arts Institute of Middlesex County, on Sunday, August 25, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, the Ninth Angel Caribbean Festival will take place at Earth Creation Park at 7th Prime Street in Brunswick. Revel in the island vibes with Caribbean music, cuisine, and dance performances. Enjoy a jerk chicken pausing cookout and learn about Caribbean languages. From the Ruffers Cooperative Extension of Middlesex County, on Saturday, August 24, from 11:00 to 3:00 PM, the Earth Center Gardens Arts and Music Festival will take place at Davidson Mill Park. This family-free friendly event will include live music, food trucks, environmental activities. Share your food, weigh recipes, and more. Director, that concludes my interview.
Thank you. Deputy Director Shanti now?
Thank you, Director. With the summer months in full swing, the divisions continue seasonal routine bacteria sampling of surface water bodies within the county. While sampling, our inspectors also survey the water, the water body for any signs of harmful algae blossoms, otherwise known as HABS. With combined water, warmer temperatures and conwarders, the likelihood of HABS formation is increased and contacts should be avoided. Any suspected HABS should be reported to the DEP hotline at 1-877-927-6337, or by calling our divisions at 732-745-4170. And from our Office of Emergency Management, we are in the midst of hurricane season, and the Office of Emergency Management encourages and likes to remind all residents to prepare for the seasons by following a few safety tips. Number one, please create a family emergency plan. Number two, prepare an emergency supply kit. And number three, stay informed by signing up for local emergency alert notifications. For additional information, please visit the county's website or call our office at 732-316-7100, so that you and your loved ones can be safe and enjoy the rest of this summer and into a beautiful fall season. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Charlie Townell.
Thank you, Director. Blazing the park had an incredible 60-second season, over 23,000 visitors, and wouldn't have been more going to have so many damn raindrops. Enjoyed Beauty and the Beast in the Heights, and a funny thing happened on the way to the Forum. We also had over 250 veterans and active service members that came to see the plays and were given free admission. Middlesex County applauds and supports our veteran service members and their families. Next onstage at the Stephen Jay Cathedral Theater is our annual Free Labor Day Weekend Concert. Come to Roosevelt Park on Sunday, September 1st to celebrate an evening of unforgettable high-energy entertainment. We will be enjoying the beginnings, a celebration of music of Chicago, and Jimmy and the Paris, a tribute to Jimmy Buffett and tropical rock band. Concert begins at 4:00 PM, the gates open at 3:00, don't forget to bring your lawn chairs. Speaking of concerts, if you have not joined us yet at, at one of our free concerts at Grand Bay Waterfront Parks, Brimley Park, Medford Park, or Thompson Park, you still have a few chances. We are facing up the series with Garden Skates and Defining Hand, performing favorites of stage of screen. Underwater Airlines performing a selection of classic rock, and Perry Brothers performing Irish, Irish favorites. The full schedule can be found on our website. And, and don't let the rest of the summer fly by. Make sure you get outdoors and enjoy our parks. Check out the Roman sport and pickleball, and play at the courts in Thompson's Park, Donaldson Park, Warren Park, take a walk, jog, or a bike ride along our three-and-a-half-mile cave Middlesex County Green Ranger, which runs through Deduction, Edison, and Woodbridge. Bring your canoe or kayak to Jamesburg Park Conservation Area, the Explorer, Almeta, Pong, Holland, Padling Trail. There's also, there's also something for everybody in our parks. More information, you can be found on our website, and that concludes our important.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone, Labor Day weekend is fastly approaching. Well, it's me, I love summer, but it's the official end of summer, and I would just reiterate that people be safe, lot of traffic on the roads, going down the shore or wherever, and just be mindful of the traffic. Okay, Ms. Athan Mesopolis, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Anything to be amended?
There are none.
Anything to be helped?
There are none.
Concord.
There are none.
Okay, this time, the meeting is open to the public, discuss it, on resolutions listed only. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Chairman, Charlie Crowe of Brunswick, Brunswick Today, I'll start with the first item, the appointment to the MCUA, number 973. Can somebody tell me what, what about this person made them a good fit for the position?
Well, he's been involved in the community, he supported, he supports things going on in the community, and we interviewed him, and we feel that he would be a right next for the MCUA. He lives in St. Louis as well.
Right, is that a councilman?
Yeah.
And Mr. Giuliano, do you, do we know what prompted him to leave the board?
I don't know.
Okay. I wanted to ask about the next one, this is the formerly called Wolf and Samson Firm, can you tell me what work they're going to be doing for the county?
Is that resolution 24-dash-nine-seventy-four?
Correct.
Yes, the county is engaging the firm of Chiefs Shannon and Jane Tomasi as special land use counsel to assist the county in negotiating lease agreements and to handle other various land use issues that may arise as part of the CIO project.
See, is there a not-to-exceed amount contract?
To my knowledge, there is not.
Okay, is there a rate, like an hourly?
There is, I don't recall it off the top of my head, but I can provide that to you.
Okay, does the county have like a ballpark figure of how much you think this kind of stuff might cost for the CIO plan?
We can't anticipate that at this time.
I'll move to page four, this is page four on the 6:00 PM agenda. The 989, delivery of Middlesex County healthcare kiosk can basically?
Page five?
989.
989?
Oh, for me, it's on page four, hell, 6:00 PM agenda. Okay, just grabbing, I think it was there, but 989 is the number.
Lyra, can you answer that for us briefly?
Well, Melissa will gladly provide additional information to you on Monday, but she provided information that it is a healthcare kiosk that will be located in Brunswick and provide free items such as health brochures, hygiene kits, first aid kits, ethanol, and ecstasy testing strips, and Nox can, all items will focus on prevention and harm reduction, and is being funded by the county opioid settlement funding. County and city staff have been working closely to finalize the location and items.
Got it, is there a cost, a price tag on this one?
She'll be able to talk to you on Monday.
Thank you. 996 is a CDVG grant, the Urban Health Collaborate, can you just tell me what it's for, under $40,000?
These are the allocation of the Community Development Block Grant COVID dollars to programs of progressive food insecurity in Middlesex County. It's in combination of state and federal CDVG and CD funds, so any additional information to consult to you on Monday.
Okay, I'm just not sure what, what it is for. Is there any information on what the grant is for?
I would say that, as Lyra would say, that we can get that to you, oh, wait, before you, uh, food, yeah.
Food, okay, thank you. And I think I have one more to ask about, this is number 1018, this is the lease for the Office of the Sheriff, the Sheriff's Office Headquarters, I believe. Comes out to almost a half million dollars a year in rent. Over the course of five years, it would be 2.475 million dollars. Why is the county in this arrangement, why not, you know, try to own, own the building as opposed to keep renting it for all these years?
Well, Mr. Polamina has stated in the past that we've been trying to make efforts to try to consolidate our outside satellite offices, and if we could bring them into one of our other buildings, we would be more than happy to do that to the current cause. So is that a, a goal? Yes, it is a goal, I can't say right now at this point where we're at with that, as far as moving that into one of our own buildings, that they would, we would have that, no guarantees.
Okay, yes, it's certainly.
Time's up?
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor? Vote, motion carries. Okay, do we have any Commissioners that have to vote separately?
I do, sir.
What is that? 1018?
Yes.
Anyone else? That's it, okay.
Director, motion now, in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 24-dash-nine-seven-three. through 24-dash-1080, excluding Resolution Number 24-dash-1018, identified as a conflict by Commissioner McCollum, to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in call?
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner McNair?
Yes.
County Commissioner Drucker?
Yes.
A motion now is in order to adopt Resolution 24-dash-1018 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion? Motion to go down?
Second.
All in call?
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Coppel?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
President of the State.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Narra?
Yes.
County Commissioner Drucker?
Yes. Okay, this time I open up the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville. I kind of expressed a disappointment. I know you were at the event Tuesday morning, the Affordable Housing Policy Summit.
Yes.
And that event was closed to the press.
Yes.
Yeah, whose decision was it to close the event to the press?
I'm sorry?
Whose decision was it?
That was, that was a meeting that was inadvertently posted that it was open, but it was a meeting that was for the Human Services Advisory Advocacy Group, the Human Advisory Council, and different municipal leaders, experts, and to collaborate and discuss the new law as far as affordable housing and the housing. And it was closed to the press, just like you were notified there.
Right, I was actually ticketed. I showed up.
That was a mistake, and someone from our office apologized to you saying that that was a mistake.
Right, right. And just to be clear, I would have preferred an apology for blocking me from attending rather than apologizing for accidentally telling me about the event beforehand. You're saying it was accidentally, you say, disclosed on the county website, published. The public was invited, so my question to you is then, why didn't you honor the invitations that you extended and allow ticketed people in regardless of their profession? Why did you discriminate against the orders?
We discussed this with you earlier, Charlie. I'm not going to elaborate anymore. We gave you the answer. You don't like the answer. I can't help you with that. That's where we're at.
And well, we're going to have to work through it because this is wrong, what happened. This is not a political party event. This is not a private nonprofit event. This is the county government hosting an event in the name of the county.
It appeared many meetings.
A lot of effort was put into the event. And my question is, why? Why not allow the press in? Why not allow me to report the event? What do you have to hide? It seemed like a good thing was going on there, but I don't know because you didn't let me in. Why was it closed to the press?
There's nothing to hide. There's nothing to hide.
And why was it closed to the press? What value did that add? What was the goal of doing that? How did that help?
Charlie, your only goal, your only goal is to get you that "I got you" moment, to try to make the county look better. Every Commissioner on this board has every intention to make public policy a lot better for every constituent in this county. Everyone. These meetings go on all the time between different professionals, different municipal leaders, different experts in different fields, and it goes on and on and on every day. How we can make county government run more efficient, how we can promote more services for our constituents, our businesses, and our visitors.
Respectfully, I don't think you know what my goals are. And you don't, and I don't pretend to know what yours are. But I'm asking genuinely why you don't want the press at this kind of event. It seemed like an informative event. It seemed like a policy-focused event. We call it public policy for a reason, not private policy. It's public policy. Why not open it up to the public? Obviously, you're resistant to answering that question, like you're resistant to so many of my questions. And frankly, it fits a pattern of the county being anti-press. I've brought up some of the Democratic Party events and how the Democratic Party is.
We're not anti-realness.
Okay, well then, why didn't you let the press into the Affordable Housing Policy Summit? If you're pro-press, why didn't you let me in?
I said real press.
Did you? What'd you say?
I said real.
Okay, so you're implying I'm not real press. Is that what you're saying?
All I'm saying is, Charlie, you were told Tuesday that this was a meeting of our head, Housing Advisory Council and different professionals to strategize on the new law and how we can make things better for housing for people.
Yeah, that would have been great to be able to get that on video and share that with our audience. But the county did make a video of it. Will you release the video? Will you commit to release the full video of the event?
If we make it a video, and we will make it public.
The full, the full.
If we make a video, it's going to be beneficial and it's going to be an educational piece for our experts and municipal leaders, yeah. So John, you have anything that you want to add to that?
Director, I would just say, and maybe you may have some on this as well, but Mr. Cradaville, I think you're alluding to your open request, which I understand you put it in for the video. I believe that's been provided to you already.
Oh, I'll have to check my email when I get home, but yeah, that's great news if you're releasing it to me.
Time's up.
I'm sorry I missed the event. Wish you would have let me in. You made a mistake.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Your motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Vote. Motion carries.